We're going to dispense with the flag salute during this meeting because we're just doing[8.71][8.71]interviews at this point, and we'll do the flag salute during the regular meeting of the council. And we'll have a roll call, please.
Counselor Robel?
Present.
Counselor Goodwin? Mayor Gorley?
Here.
Counselor Moll- I'm sorry, vacant. Counselor Moller?
Here.
Counselor Trask?
Here.
Counselor Underwood?
Here.
So let the record show that we have five present, one absent, and one vacant. All right. The way this is going to work is we're going to go through these fairly quickly through our questions with each person, interview each one, and then we will ask only the individual that's doing the interviewing to be in here during the interview, and we'll ask the other people that are being interviewed to stand in the hallway until after the interview is done. Once their interview is done, that individual can stay in the room, but the other ones come in one at a time into the room at that point. And we have a set group of questions that each person will be asked, the same questions, and also with the- we take the questions along with what you've given us as far as an application and background, and then we will make a decision at the end, going into our council meeting, and we will rate the applicants from one to seven, one to 10. We'll rate them from one to 10. I will take the scores, add them up, and then the person with the highest rating then would be our number one, number two, number three, number four down that list. Okay? And we will make that determination in regular council meeting after we start at that point. Any questions from anybody? Jan, are you able to hear okay?
Am I what?
Are you able to hear me okay?
Oh, no. I'm just kind of ripping your lips right now.
Okay. Is there anything we can do to make that better?
Um...
Do you want- you want-
Four or $5,000 for neighbors.
No, but what I'm asking is if you want the people to look directly at you whenever they speak would help you.
Yeah, we won't, yeah. You'll have to come and get me. I won't hear you call my name.
Right, but when we talk to you here, we'll talk to you directly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll be sitting in that chair.
Yes.
That's it.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody? Any other questions on how we're doing this process? Okay. We're going to try and make it as harmless and painless as possible until the very end. And then, once you're on the council, it's very painful.
Really painful.
So the first person that we have up is Teresa Howard, so I'd ask the other applicants then to step into the hallway and close the door, please.
I don't know who Teresa Howard is.
You haven't missed anything, honey.
You'll have to introduce yourself.
I've only been here 20 years. I'm a newcomer.
Yeah, her family's been here a long time.
Yeah, yeah, 21. No.
Okay. So Teresa, you heard what I said about how we're going to do the interviews?
Yep.
And I was hoping that our last council member would come before we started. He's not here, so we will go ahead and start. What we're going to do is we're going to go, starting here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and then-
Okay.
-start over again, and at the end, or seven, and then at the end, I'll ask you the last question.
Okay.
All right. Starting off with Mr. Gold.
All right. So, number one, please give a brief verbal resume of your relevant experience and tell us why you would like to be a part of the Sweet Home City Council.
Well, I have absolutely no political experience of any kind, other than at the voting booth. I love this town. I love this town. And I'm eligible. I live in the city limits. I've been here for 20 years, and that's the criteria.
What do you see as your role to be in governing the city of Sweet Home as a city council member?
Hopefully, to just bring a new perspective to old business or new business, make, you know, a difference, open to new suggestions.
What areas of the city government are you particularly interested in?
Economic growth.
How would you like to see the city look in five years, 10 years, and 20 years?
I would love to see the city grow, slow but sure. That way, it's not a hard impact on housing, or shopping, or anything like that. I'd like to see this city grow to the point where we could, you know, go buy a suit, a dress, a pair of shoes, other than camo, and have jobs for our young people. They're all leaving. They get out of school, they join the Army, or the Navy, or they're Marines, and they're gone. So, I'd like to see them stay here. I'd like to see this town become a city, a big city.
How would you handle a citizen request or a complaint outside of the city council meeting?
Just bring the information that they asked about, or whatever they said, to the rest of the council, and it would be, you know, whatever happened would happen at that point.
What do you see the greatest challenge facing the city of Sweet Home?
The greatest challenge is our economic growth. We're going nowhere.
What do you see as the greatest opportunity for the city of Sweet Home?
Our natural resources. We live in one of the most beautiful spots in Oregon. We've got the goods. All we have to do is package them up and sell them.
Okay, now that we've asked you all these questions, it's your turn. Do you have any questions of us?
I have one question, and I hope I don't get shut down, but I would like to know what is the direction for this city that you guys spoke of several weeks ago.
Well, part of that direction, we're still- we actually have to- we're having a meeting coming up soon with our council, with the goals, with the city, and we're going to be going forward with that to try and come up with directions that the community wants, as well as what the city needs, but what the community wants, and see if we can somehow how we can mesh those together-
Marry those together.
-to go forward with a common goal, because what we're seeing is we're seeing that goals are- and expectations are all over the place, and we've got to bring them together so that we can go forward with more of a common goal than what we've had.
Okay. I appreciate that answer.
Until we get there, that's where we're at.
I appreciate the answer.
And I think, from my standpoint, and I can't speak to the council, we're- I think the council is on board with the economic development. We have really, in my opinion-
Yeah, I think they always have been. It's just not going anywhere, you know?
Yeah, we've kind of failed that. So, anyway.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So you can stick around if you want?
I will.
So, now this is going to work, Lisa, is we're going to start off with going from question one through question seven. I'll ask you question eight. I'll ask each candidate the same question, and then, as we do that, we will get your answers, and we will decide based upon that and the resume that we have.
Okay.
Okay? Number one.
Please give a brief verbal resume of your relevant experience, and tell us why you would like to be a part of the Sweet Home City Council.
Well, my verbal? I do have- I run Sweet Home Cleaners. I'm the coordinator, executive director. I'm a volunteer there. I do know that in 2012, we were- when I took over at the end of- in December of 2012, they were almost $20,000 in debt. In two years, we got out of debt. That was a good, um, but I have my bachelor's degree in business. It's business of science through California State University in Bakersfield, and my concentrations were marketing, human resource, and management. Don't ask. I overachieved it. I did three things instead of just one. The other thing, I'm trying to think, why I want to be- would like to be appointed? I do care about the city and the progress of our town. I'm trying to think of what else I've done. Okay. I think that's pretty much a brief.
What do you see as your role to be in governing the city of Sweet Home as a city council member?
Well, your man- your- not managing, but your role is to help make decisions, but you also have to put in this, you know, the consideration of the citizens' choice, what the citizens want. My experience with cleaners is that it's similar in the way that the membership makes the decision. They kind of say what they want. The Board of Directors carry out those decisions, so.
What areas of city government are you particularly interested in?
Probably finance, marketing. I'm into the marketing area, but I haven't seen- I've been trying to research what Sweet Home does in marketing to the- to outside the- but outside of our community, attracting visitors, attracting different things, businesses. And then I'm also interested in the parks, and improving some of the- that's pretty much a few of the things.
In the city, how would you like this city to look in five years, 10 years, and 20 years?
I can look at it in five years, progress towards filling vacancies, the businesses. The look of the city, there's some things, like some improvements. Downtown, there's some vacancies. I'd like to see that in the future, those are filled. And 10 years, I'd like to see the city actually prospering, not where it's at right now, but more, you know, becoming more prosperous. And 20 years, it's about the same. I'd like to see it further evolve into-
Okay, so how would you handle a citizen request or complaint outside of a city council meeting?
I would direct them to the department manager, or to the city manager, or ask them to come to a council, a city council meeting, to talk, discuss it publicly.
What do you see as the greatest challenge facing the city of Sweet Home?
The greatest challenge? Probably how some of the citizens feel about our town. Changing the citizens' morale of the town, and one is through improving our parks and getting more citizen involvement.
What do you see as the greatest opportunity for the city of Sweet Home?
There's a lot of opportunity. We have our lake. It's beautiful. Around us, the trees, the nature, it's- our schools aren't that bad. I had a kid that went to school here. She's great. So I moved here because of what I saw in this town 11 years ago, so.
Now it's your turn. Do you have any questions of us?
The only question I have is basically, I wondered how- I tried to research it. How does the city market our- market to the community, to states, other states outside to attract, you know, attract?
Most of it is through Chamber oriented things. We have- we just did a new visitor's guide that's marketed in Oregon, throughout Oregon, and we have websites in- and there's Chamber website, there's a Jamboree, City Police, what is it?
City.
Yeah, City.
No, change of location.
Yeah, so there's about five or six of those out there that are blasting out our stuff, but as far as marketing and other areas, you have to be very targeted in how you market and where you market to. If you're marketing in- as a state, most of the places now market as a state, so like all of Texas would market as Texas. And then individually, they- each one of them ponies up to market as Texas, not as individual ones, unless you're a huge city like Portland, or Vancouver, or those, and then they can market individually.
Yeah, Travel Oregon.
Yeah, Travel Oregon, one also that's out, as well as Visit Lynn County.
We receive transient occupancy tax monies from overnight stays in our hotels and our mobile parks, and we use- a portion of that money goes to tourism promotion each year. I think Pat and I were just talking about this today, and we have $15,000 in the budget this next year, of which, you know, primarily that goes to the Chamber of Commerce to promote our community.
Visitor Center, those sort of things.
Because I haven't really- I did- my- a couple classes ago, I did it on cities marketing, and there were a few cities back east that I could find that do these big, huge reports. They, I mean, they actually target areas to bring- and they're small, there's- some of them are small cities, but they target like New York and big cities to come in.
Because they have a big area to target to.
Yeah. Okay. I guess I've been.
All right, well, thank you. Dawn Marie Rogers.
Hi.
So, I know it's really scary and all that, but really not bad. What we're going to do is we're going to go down questions one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and we'll- or seven, and I'll ask number eight, and then we'll- at the end, we go by your resume and by this, and we'll rank everybody and make a decision based upon that.
Okay.
All right? So, we'll start off.
Hi.
Hi.
Please give a brief verbal resume of your relevant experience, and tell us why you would like to be appointed to the Sweet Home City Council.
I have lived in Sweet Home for a total of 11 years, so I've kind of been volunteering with the public off and on for that 11 years. I've been a member of the VFW for 25 years, and so my heart and soul is kind of wrapped up in the VFW and doing a lot of charity work and- for the homeless vets, and working with- trying to get them up and going. Also, I help residents find places to go if they're new to the area, and they've dropped in to the VFW, because that's the first place they see. They go, well, we don't know where to go. I give them a list. So, well, these are the places where you can go to get help for food, help for clothes. I send them to SHAM, I send them to the cleaners. So I send them- I feel like we're kind of a- I feel like sometimes I'm a gateway person. I'm always there to greet people with a nice, warm smile. And I like to be out on the road nowadays, though I don't work as much. I've been out, kind of roaming around the city a lot more lately, kind of, you know, seeing what's out there and making sure that people are smiling and knowing that, you know, there are people out there that care. You know, that not everybody is out there to just look at them with a grumpy face, and I would like to be appointed to the council, just so I can continue doing good work with the people of Sweet Home. I feel like helping the people of Sweet Home would also be helping my family tradition. My mom grew up in this town, my grandmother grew up in this town, my great-grandmother grew up in this town, and now I'm going to be raising my daughter in this town. So, I believe in helping this town, I'm helping our future generation also.
What do you see as your role to be in governing the city of Sweet Home as a city council member?
I see my role as being a person that if somebody had a, just like maybe a small complaint, and they didn't know who to go to, they could say, you know, hey, this problem has come up. Who do I- who do I talk to? Because I heard you were on the council. Well, you can take this complaint, you can write a complaint to the city council, and these are the members of the council. I feel like that as a city council member, I can do that for this town, kind of let them know, you know, if there is a problem, you can talk to them. We're not, you know, like, I see the board as people that aren't going to just look at you and go, really, you know, you're- you're all are people. You want to listen to what people have to say, and that's what I would like to see.
What areas of the city government are you particularly interested in?
I'm particularly interested in helping the- some of the problem areas, cleaning up some of the problem areas. Some of the parks, I know we're cleaning up some of the parks. I've tried to help get out there sometimes when it's, you know, clean up the park day. If I'm not working that day, and I'm not doing stuff for a family, I try to get my boots on and get my gloves on. I would also like to see myself as working with some of the homeless. I would really like to see something done with that and kind of let them know that they're not the forgotten ones.
In the city of Sweet Home, how would you like to see our city look in five years, 10 years, 20 years?
In five years, I'd like to see- I'd like to see us be the green city, green tree city again, see more plants planted along the businesses again. I'd like to see the businesses actually open up downtown. It's been far too long for the empty buildings. 10, 20 years, I would like to see the town as a whole come together and have, like, all city flea markets, all city barbecues, stuff that I remember as a child. I'd like to see those again.
Okay, so how would you handle a citizen request or a complaint outside of the city council meeting?
If I had a city request or a complaint outside of the city council, if it was a question that I did not know, I would simply let them know that I did not know the question, or I do not know the answer to the question, but- and I would simply state, since I do not know the answer to your question, I would invite you to come to a city council meeting where we can discuss it, again, to write out a complaint, or I can go with this person, we can go to the library, or somewhere where we can sit down and search for the answer together. Or we can go knock on the mayor's door, for instance, and say, Mayor, may I have a minute of your time? This person needs this question answered, or any of the other city council members. That way, the person doesn't feel like they've gotten lost in the shuffle. It's- I know how hard it is to be lost in the shuffle and not get their answers questioned, or their questions answered. So, to me, it would be important to help that person find the answer, and give them the correct answer, and not just kind of say, well, this is- I think this is the question, the answer to your question, but I'm not sure, and then blow them off. I would rather not do that.
Okay. Jeff?
What do you see as the greatest challenge facing the city of Sweet Home?
I currently see the greatest challenge facing Sweet Home is a lot of the empty stores that are downtown. A lot of the visitors that come through town, whether they're going to the lakes, or going up and over the pass, all they see is emptiness. There are stores that are open, but there are a lot of the empty ones, and I would like to see those open again. It's just- it's almost kind of like certain sections of downtown are like little ghost towns, and driving through, it's almost kind of eerie sometimes. When I first moved back, it was eerie seeing those empty stores.
What do you see as the greatest opportunity for the city of Sweet Home?
I believe the greatest opportunity for the city of Sweet Home is that we have a potential to grow, and we have also the potential to be a great town. We just need to work together. We just need to work together. We see so many people in town fighting against each other. It used to be where you can walk downstairs, you know, walk downtown and everybody knew your name. You used to be able to, you know, leave your house unlocked. That's changed over the last thirty-five years since, oh goodness, since I've been out of high school. But, uh, the greatest opportunity is, is change, you know? And we have jamboree, you know? We have good things happening with that and that's another good thing that's changing for this town. That's bringing in lots, more and more people. I've seen the demographics come as far as the Midwest and as far as New York. So, we're doing good. So, and I hope to see that continue.
All right, so we've asked you questions. It's your turn to ask us anything.
At this moment, I do not have any questions for you.
Okay.
Great.
See, it was harmless.
I think it helped that I was pretty well, and it was nice to hear kids. Because I haven't been my nanny self for that couple of days.
Jeff, did you need a couple of minutes?
I'm, I'm all right. I think we just proceed and get this done with. I don't think I'm going to stick around for the rest of the night, but.
Well, that's what I was asking, if you're all right.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes you gotta be here and there's nothing else to do, so.
I know, that's why I'm out, that's why I was asking. We can take five if you needed it, but if you don't. Hi, how you doing?
Good.
So, Diane.
Yes, sir.
You heard me explain how this works.
Yep.
So, we're going to start off by asking questions and we'll go down the line, ask each one of us asked questions. At the end, I'll ask number eight. And after we're done, then we will take your resume and the interview and we'll rank everybody from one to ten and then we're going to take the top, add them all up and take the, the person with the highest score.
Okay.
Okay? And we'll start off.
Please give a brief verbal resume of your relevant experience and tell us why you would like to be appointed to the Sweet Home City Council.
Well, I'm a retired public school administrator. I have a doctorate in education. I am on, currently on the library board. I am on the Sheddick Board. I have experience with the Lynn County Commission on Children and Families and Head Start Board. I'm on my homeowners association board. And I, let's see, what else? President of my PEO group. As why I want to be a council member, I think I stated before, I'd rather be part of the solution than the problem. So, that's why I want to be on the council.
What do you see as your role to be in governing the city of Sweet Home as a city council member?
Well, first of all, I have a very diverse network of, for communication. If you can see from the groups that I'm involved with, very few of them overlap. So, I, I have a very diverse network. I'm a very good collaborator. I communicate very well. And also, I'm a multitasker. I completed my doctorate while working full-time and raising a family, so I can multitask. I also feel that I would be a voice for the underrepresented in the community and that being the women and the seniors.
What areas of the city government are you particularly interested in doing?
Economic development, collaboration with other entities, and I would like the development of common areas for all ages.
Okay, how would you like to see our city in five years, ten years, twenty years?
Well, first of all, in five years, viable shopping and RV parking. I think those two are very important and no empty buildings. In ten years, I'd like to see a venue for art fairs, music festivals, sports area, sports competitions brought into the community. And in twenty years, I'd like to see the business section moved off of Highway Twenty so we can control it. And, and I'd like places where people can gather and stroll in this community twenty years down the road.
Okay.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
How would you handle a citizen's request or a complaint outside of the city meeting, or city council meeting, I'm sorry?
Well, first of all, I know there's a process for that. There's always a process for that. I'm a pretty, I'm a pretty good listener, but I would refer the person to the city manager or the correct staff person. I do feel that this would be important as a city council person, though, to follow up with the person who had the complaint. And did their complaint get answered? And I think that's very important.
What do you see as the greatest challenge facing the city of Sweet Home?
I think it's important that we bring together all the entities that are trying to make this city work. Right now, we have a lot of entities working in different directions and we don't have any cohesion. I see the city council as the group to bring these groups together. And that, to me, is the greatest challenge we face.
What do you see as the greatest opportunity for the city of Sweet Home?
It's people. If you want something done in Sweet Home and it's tangible and they can see it and know that it's going to work, they'll come out and do it. But if you can sit, continue to do studies and surveys and nothing happens from it, then people won't get involved in it. But tangible, we've proven that time after time after time. The, the track, tennis courts, the senior center, those are, that's, people have done that. Not the city council, but people have done that. So, the people in Sweet Home will do that. But it has to be tangible for them to understand that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We've asked you.
I do have a question.
Okay, ask us.
I want to know why the goals in the budget book have not been approved at this point.
They have not been approved because we have not brought them before the community yet to have the community buy into those.
And I guess I need to know why that has.
Because of some of the other things that have been going on with our city manager and some of that until we got Christie on board and then we scheduled a time. Now, we have a time scheduled to do that. So, it's, we're, we're coming forward now to do that. But they, we had the goals, but we didn't, we weren't able to bring them before the community to make sure that we had a, a direction with the community.
Okay, that's all, Mark.
All right.
We have that date, Julie, the date, we have the, um, August ninth. August ninth, August ninth, we'll be having a goal-setting session.
Christie, where's that, is that going to be at the senior center?
Yeah.
Is it going to be here? Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Andrew, the way we, the way we have this set up is we're going to ask you questions. One, one of us will ask each question. At the end, we'll go by your resume, by your interview, and we'll rank people in a score of one to ten. We'll add those up and then that, the top person then will be, the fairway
Yes.
will be the number one person.
Okay.
Please give a brief verbal resume of your relevant experience and tell us why you would like to be appointed to the Sweet Home City Council.
Well, irrelevant, uh, we, as far as currently, I'm serving on the parks board. I've served in budget, budget, I think, three of the last four years, parks for the last four years. I was recently appointed to, on the steering, chair of steering committee. I've served in various boards and stuff and for the city of Sweet Home, as far as I was in the city of Sweet Home, throughout the last four years. I actually grew up here in Sweet Home. Saying that, though I have not lived here the whole time, actually, I graduated high school in two thousand and one. Went to Eastern Oregon, started off there in political science, ironically enough. I transferred to Boise State, have degree in finance, that's why I'm on the budget committee and stuff. And the big reason I'm, you know, why I serve in this community, for one, is I have this belief that wherever you go to, wherever you live, you need to try to make the best of it and make it better than what it currently is, no matter where it is. I've lived in Boise, which is a boom town, other than La Graina, which is now a smaller, and honestly, feels like Sweet Home twenty years ago when I lived there. So, for me, I've been involved as far as in sports, coaching track, coaching cross-country. I've been involved with the youth, been involved in various things and I see the city council as a means to not just continue doing that, but also bring all those pieces together and serve in the policymaking that enables for more improvement to happen in the community.
So, what do you, what, excuse me, what do you see as your role to be in governing the city of Sweet Home as a city council member?
Two pieces. One is, I looked at two pieces. One of us, one to be the ears that kind of listen to the community members and say, okay, what's, what people are thinking on. Two is with that, helping them connect to the different resources. Because if they know you're a council member, they go, okay, hey, I want, I think this should be done, that should be done. Yes, I want to listen to them. Yes, I want to try to point them to the right direction. But two, make sure, understanding that, that we work towards the policies that help improve the ability to make positive improvement or improve the livability of Sweet Home. You know, a lot of, I don't think many of us here on, inside this, this room want to see a town deteriorate at all by any means. But within the community, they kind of see sometimes that they wonder what's really going on in city hall. And to be out there saying, hey, yes, we are working on these things. What's your idea? Okay, how, this is what you can do to help get involved, to help push it to be, you know, the community be better, whether it be a policy or action or something. But for myself, being their ears and then being there to help make sure the policies happen that help us improve.
What areas of the city government are particularly interesting to you?
Budget, obviously, degree in finance and also I serve in the budget committee. But the other pieces are creating policies to help us leverage our own, our community's resources. We have a city, well, hit this a little bit later also in another one of the questions here. We have a recreation hub that is not, has not been fully developed, in my opinion. We need to set the context that helps to make sure that things are proactive, that we are moved, that the town isn't, a lot of people have this idea that Sweet Home, city hall is trying to stop things from happening and actually, it's very false a lot of ways. It's, but that context is still there. Putting policies in place, working towards making sure that we leverage city resources so that people see, hey, this is a resource that will help growth of something, either a business or other recreation or somehow it's going to help leverage that resource at least.
Okay, so how would you see our city, how would you want it to look in five years, ten years, and twenty years?
Well, looking at the realistic thing as far as like five years from now, I'm hopeful that more progress will happen down closer to the river along there that Sheddick's working on and that development. And in seeing that, like I said, recreation hubs really I want to see Sweet Home grow more into, not just tourist-based recreation, but also you have entire industries that could be devoted towards recreation. I'll give an example, it's not necessarily related to us, actually, it could be skis, water, water skis or whatnot. You have a ski, a community that has a recreation in skiing, you have a base for those type of things, for ski and poles and stuff like that. For us, we're not that type, but we haven't done our, I think there's more potential to grow that hub, whether it be the music and arts that we see that's going to go on there or other recreation activities involving the forest and stuff around us. So, in five years, I'm hopeful to see that get developed. In ten years, I see, because of that development, that we see the old mill sites become more economically viable properties for shopping or for light manufacturing relating to recreation being done here. Twenty years, I'm hopeful that we have larger systems in place that enable people to have business ideas or other things to will come into town and say, hey, this is a town that I can do something with. I can build something here. I can be able, make my, my, my idea or dream come true as such.
Okay, so how would you handle a citizen request or a complaint outside of the city council meeting?
First of all, listen to them before even trying to contradict them or try to correct them or any way, which way or form. A lot of people just, they want to, they have something, it might be a misunderstanding or whatnot, but they have something they want to get off their chest. Listen to them first. Second of all, okay, there are, depending on their issue, different protocols to be taken. It might be something we need to send to our city manager and say, okay, why don't you address this there or whatnot? Sometimes it's that they don't realize a resource or something exists and you go, or a group exists. An example, Sheddick share and whatnot. Say, okay, your idea more relates to this group or this entity. Chat with them, get more information here before move, before, you know, getting too upset and understand what the background is. Obviously, with, you know, I'm not going to take a, a side with them and say, you know, I, I agree with you, I don't agree. It's like, hey, you know, I've had times during city parks board meetings where someone came in, did a presentation and I had to go down the line and go, okay, yes, you pointed out all these problems. Now, the problem is we need you to help us with a solution. So, instead of, and try to direct them away from necessarily complaining to that point of saying, how can you help with that improve, with making that change that you want to see happen? And we're only human, so we need, you know, we need volunteer. A lot of times, a lot of people complain about stuff. It's like, well, why is the city of Sweet Home's streets for this or that not the way I want it to be? Well, it's like, well, are you involved in, are you on, serving on committee? Are you serving? Try to guide them towards more proactive versus reactive.
What do you see as the greatest challenge facing the city of Sweet Home?
Context. Citizens, Sweet Home unfortunately has more of a reactive context, I think, than a proactive context. Saying that, part of it is, yes, we, we dealt with the, the timber downfalls and stuff as far as the industry's changing. We've become a veteran community. Now, unfortunately, what it does is having a business downtown here, the population that actually has money seems to go off to drive to work and then leaves what's left in town, not necessarily be the, to look the best as far as giving the image of Sweet Home. But the, we're seeing some of that contextual transition. purification's been in place. We're seeing proactive lifestyle stuff within business communities like, you know, the, from the business side, like Steelhead Fitness, I'll be honest with you. They got people running all around all the time and being active outside and they're trying to push for more activities. We've got the health fair coming up in August. Those pieces make Sweet Home look less like a little, you know, excuse the term, hick town, log town, logging town that's been lost to, to the past and makes us look like, hey, there's something going on here. I want to be a part of it. I want to be involved in it. Because the more active people are, the more proactive they are, the more we're going to see Sweet Home grow into that recreation hub that I see that we are. I'll be honest, I, you know, people, it's kind of died off the last probably five, ten years. I have people saying, well, why aren't the mills building here? And it's, they go, the economics don't make sense to be building a lot of mills necessarily here like it used to be. For one, the technology has changed greatly. But two, instead of looking back at that kind of a past, we got to look forward to, okay, what do we have? The mills were built here because of the, because of the resources that were here, the timber. We still have a lot of resources. We have two lakes up here and a lot of our recreation that we have not capitalized on. So, we need to continue to promote that.
Number seven?
Or no?
Yep.
He's number seven.
What do you see as the greatest opportunity for Sweet Home? What do you see as the greatest opportunity for Sweet Home?
Once again, the leveraging of our, of our resource, and I said, not just natural resources, but also community resources. In the last twenty years, we've really developed. We have Shetty, we have Share, we have relationship, relations with the US Forest Service. BLM, I know, has some property up here, but most of yours is Forest Service. We've leveraged our resources, we even have CTC and the private timber owners. But what we need to see, what we need to do for Sweet Home is say, okay, we have not just, we have a geographic full resource sitting there, but we also have a resource of, we're next to Salem, we're next to Eugene, we're next to Almena Valles. You've actually drew a hundred mile radius around Sweet Home. This is what's amazing. There's almost three million people, because we actually encompassed part of the further metropolitan area. So, we are a great place for a lot of potential things to happen. And we need to leverage our general, our resources as far as our vicinity to different things. Population being one of them. Vicinity to the outdoors, vicinity to these, to our, even some of our municipal resources or our non-government groups, like I said, Shetty, Share, and stuff like that. We need to really work on that, making those really stand out, say, hey, this is why you want to live here. This is why you want to build here.
Okay, now.
I know, I get to ask the question.
Your turn.
Yeah, but don't get scripted, that's not fair. And he's already dropping the gavel on me. You know, the, the, the things, and I mean, I understand that we got some stuff coming up and the, the City Council is going to be having to address. I know, community questions. What's kind of, you see the next three biggest challenges the City Council's going to be facing over the next year or two? I can think of a couple off the top of my head, but what would you say?
Well, I think we're going to have to come up with a solution to our wastewater and water issues going forward. Well, it won't be something that happens tomorrow, but it'll be a long-term solution. We need to come up with what, what we're going to do with a building, if we're going to finish that building, move City Hall, whatever we're going to do with that. That's an immediate decision. And then.
What about economic development? In the past, we wanted to help, work, partnered with Shetty to help fund, or is Brian Hoffman's position?
I think, I think that's another decision that we have to look at, is when we get a new city manager, what direction do we want that city manager to go? Do we want him or her to be a, a direction of more towards economic development? Or, or where do we want that to lie, and how do we want the, the city to follow along with that? So we have to make some of those decisions, and those are probably, will come out in our city goals.
Right, so in the, once you knew January, February, that?
Well, the, the goals that we haven't, we have not got our goals set yet, and it's August ninth or eight, ninth, that we do the finalization with the community to get those where we can understand what the community wants and how we mesh those two together. So we will come up with a good solution then.
And, and I was going to say, one of the things, the questions that, that I think trying to make more apparent protocols and stuff for like addressing things in, like I'm on the Parks Board and whatnot, and people wonder, how do I approach this? And how do we make that more public for? Because a lot of things is like, I hear people have ideas, and I said they're going, well, that's wonderful. You need to approach which group, kind of defining those resources and be able to make sure that people know, are aware, this is where you need to go.
I'm currently in the process of looking at different committees and seeing if we can combine some committees and make them easier and more accessible to the community. I think we have, the way we have our committees set up right now, we have maybe more committees than what we need. And if we had fewer committees, maybe a little bit larger with more people on them, where we could have our, our quorums easier. And so we could get more work done when we do have meetings. I think people would be happier with that, when they come to a meeting, that there'll actually be a, people there ready to go to work and to make decisions on what they want. So I think that that'll help.
I don't have any more further questions for you guys.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Am I allowed?
Yes. Jan, what we're going to do is, we're going to take the same set of questions that everybody else had. We're going to go one through.
You're going to be reading the question aloud to me, and each councillor is going to take a chance to read it.
And then I'll ask number eight. I will ask number eight.
Are you committed to this hard and fast order?
Yes. And when we're done, we'll make a decision based upon your resume and the answers in your interview, and rank you in a one to ten. And then we're going to take all those and add them up, and whoever comes up with the highest score amongst everybody will be the person that we appoint.
And you'll make that decision this evening?
Yes.
You're going to be asking question number one?
Yes. Please give a brief verbal resume of your relevant experience and tell us why you would like to be appointed to the Sweet Home City Council.
Well, actually, I found this question very difficult to answer, because I couldn't find anything that actually listed what the duties and responsibilities of the council were. I researched, and all I could find was a 1910 city charter that says one of the duties was to keep out liquor-selling establishments and body houses. And all I can say is, somebody failed in their duty a long time ago. So I would say that possibly one of my relevant experiences is the fact that I like to read and I like to research, and that I'm familiar with through my work at the American Legion Auxiliary with Robert's Rules of Order and conducting a meeting. To answer the second part, to tell us why you would like to be appointed to the City Council, again, not sure. I originally started my quest to find somebody else to fill this position, and honestly, what I found out with was that some members of the councillor are difficult to communicate with and hard to get along with. So then I said to myself, these guys are my tribe, because I don't think there's anybody more difficult to communicate with than me. But there are ways to work around that communication. So I think my long history in the city, the city of Sweet Home and the desire to serve would be the reasons why I would like to be appointed to the council.
What do you see as your role to be in governing the city of Sweet Home as a City Council member?
These are really difficult questions, because pencil clicker and eye roller was already taken. So I think what I would have to say is, we've tried it that way and it didn't work, or this is just the way we do things in Sweet Home.
What areas of the city government are you particularly interested in to you?
Ah, there's no area in city government that's interested in me. I'm a firm believer in the government is best, that governs least. But if there's not anything written as to the rules for the, for Parks Boards or other boards, if there isn't anything written for the councillors, then I spent five years working on policy for the American Legion Auxiliary. I do it for my own business. I think that I would work well there in putting something in writing.
How would you like to see our city in five years, ten years, and twenty years?
Okay, I plan to die in fifteen years before my life insurance. You know, dies. So I'm going to only look to fifteen years, because otherwise I'm not going to be here and it's not going to matter to me. In five years, I would like to see a cleaner city. I would like to see us work together, not only on our downtown district, but some of our outlying residential areas. We have generational poverty in Sweet Home. And you can see it in the, in the housing that actually needs repair. So possibly as a City Council, we can work with something like Walomic Community Housing or some of the other grants and things that are available to get funding to these people so that they can repair their homes, make it more attractive. And in that way also, it should be more tax incentive for the city, because when you paint your house and you do other repairs, your tax, your appraisal raises, your taxes raises, and that means more income. I would like to see us work with Lynn Benton to set up some sort of building trades type thing, like they did with Lebanon with their automotive thing, because we need to graduate people that are employable. We need to give people hope. We don't really have a lot of job opportunities in Sweet Home. And building trades is something, construction skills, these are all things that are employable. Not everybody needs to go to college or even wants to go to a university. But everybody needs to have employable skills. And I think by working with Lynn Benton, that was something that we can do, and it will tie into our history and the timber industry. Twenty years from now, fifteen years from now, I would like to see a bridge across the river, down Eighteenth, so that we have this actual more potential for expansion. I think that's, that's something that we need to look at, keeping our infrastructure, you know, gradually poco a poco, building up and just making sure that as we go along, we're not developing too fast, that we become Appalachia, and those people who are born and raised here can't afford to live here anymore.
Okay, Jan, how would you handle a, a request or complaint outside of the City Council meeting?
Well, if it was something, just a question, I suppose I would address it directly. Like if somebody just wanted to know where a gender-neutral bathroom was, I'd just point it out to them. If there isn't anything written for the council, my, it needed responsibility to be, we need to write something up. But I, because of who I am and how I deal with people, I would say, put it in writing and bring it to the council.
What do you see as the greatest challenge facing the city of Sweet Home?
The, the greatest challenge facing the city of Sweet Home? Our branding. We don't really have an identity as a city anymore. We don't really have a way or an idea of how we want to market ourselves. So I think that when we determine that, we determine how, who we are, then we'll be able to tie in some of these other things and, and work on making Sweet Home great again.
What do you see as the greatest opportunity for the city of Sweet Home?
A river runs through it. We have such a great recreational area. We have so much going on that honestly, I'm surprised we're not inundated all of the time, because our weather is better than anywhere. You know, the rain is fabulous. We could be promoting ourselves to the people who live north of us to come down and live with us just for a little while. Come and visit, you know, go back home again when the weather gets warmer, so.
So now, it's your turn. Do you have any questions, any questions of us?
Oh yeah, I would like to know what your resident, relevant experience is that qualifies you to be city manager, or to be on the City Council.
Us? Well, now, having served here for twenty-four years, I think that I've got a little bit of experience on the council. I've been on a lot of different governors' boards. I've, I've been involved in a lot of different areas of, of city government and state government, trying to come up with solutions for a lot of the issues that you had brought up. The, the bridge going across the river, one of the first things I asked when I became on council twenty-four years ago. And how we could do that, and, and whether it was feasible to do. It's not very feasible because of the cost right now, but in the future, maybe. But that was twenty-four years ago. You know, the, some of the questions on what our role is within the community for doing this, you know, trying to be involved in, in everything we can to do that. That's my experience.
Jan, I got on the council because of some of the same reasons that you want to be on the council. Trying, I've been on the Budget Committee for a few years, and it's, it's hard to get involved if you aren't involved. And so, to just complain, and, and I thought, you know, I'll just give this my best effort and try to do what I think's best for the city. I've lived for almost all my life, like you have, and some others here, and that's the reason I ran for council. And I, I think that for the most part, all of you had some of the same concerns that I think the majority of the council has, at least I do, economic development, trying to do our recreational stuff and doing all those things. We have a lot of challenges ahead of us, and, and we're trying to address those as quickly as we can, but it's not, it's not an easy process. And so that's where I'm coming from, so.
I, you know, I mean, I, I have a very long resume. I've got five college degrees and all kinds of knowledge and experience, but I, I don't think that I decide whether I'm qualified to serve on the City Council. People decide that. I mean, I was probably the leading advocate for us not picking someone to sit on this council, because I just really don't feel like that's our decision. I think the, the people of the city select people to serve on.
You need to look quite straight here, because you're not, you're not addressing her, you're addressing us. She's the one you need to be addressing. Because she can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that.
So she needs, she reads your lips.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, I, the, I think that the people are the ones who get to make that decision. You know, there's a lot of reasons I can be qualified to be on this council, but the reasons people may have selected me to be on this council may have nothing to do with what I would list as my qualifications. I think the people of this city pick who they want for what reason they see fit, and I'll serve as long as they want to serve. And the qualification I have is I was willing to put my name in that hat, and they selected me. I, you know, I hope that everybody who's here tonight applying puts their name in the hat for November. Because the council, what we might select as a council, might be very different than what the people will select. You know, that, that's their decision, and, and you have to respect that they get to pick who they want to be their leaders, so.
Well. Let's see, I, well, I'm just like almost everybody else in town. I live paycheck to paycheck and started with volunteering around town, helping out. So I'm at a point in my life with my kids and my job where I have the opportunity to be away and help things grow and help the town evolve, and started networking with a lot of people, and went to the first step, which is the planning committee. I learned there, and then I was, I guess, looking for more punishment, so I ran for council and then was, you know, chosen earlier to move up to this position. So now I just want to be a conduit for everybody else and do what we can do best for our community.
You know, councillor Trask down there pretty much mirrored my feelings exactly. I'm maybe the youngest one up here, very close to it. And, yeah, I said very close to it. And, you know, was very young when the timber industry was very, was our economic growth. That's what we depended upon. As it contracted and as the city failed to be proactive in that economic growth sector, the last fifteen to twenty years, in my opinion, were absolutely disastrous. And instead of complaining, instead of, of take it out, what I did was I figured the only way that I'm going to make a difference is to throw my hat in the ring. And I did. And that is really the only qualification that I feel that I brought here, was having lived through that downturn at such a young age. I don't want my children to go through. lived through that downturn at such a young age. I don't want my children to go through that downturn, or, or to stay down here. I want to be able to get the community to, community to a place to where these kids can have something to do. Maybe not this generation, but the next generation, because I also know it's not going to happen overnight. It's going to be something that we in this room, as a council, as the community members of, of the city, need to unify and come together and increase this economic development, or we're going to continue to mark time, if not get worse. So...
Well, I think all the city councils are pretty much taking everything away from me that I can say, but I'll just try it.
You just get to say ditto.
Ditto. No, Jan, I've been here all my life, born, almost born, not quite, but I've been involved in a lot of city organizations, have been involved in this community in various ways. I'm like probably everybody in this room here. I'm very passionate about this community. I'm very passionate with the direction where I'd like to see this community grow. I don't think we've tapped into our recreational opportunities. I don't think we've tapped into our economical development. I don't, we've met our potential. And I think there's been a lot of spinning of the wheels. And, and I still feel there's been a lot of spinning of the wheels. And when you spin the wheels, you're not going anywhere. And that's why I joined the council, is I'm hoping that those wheels go somewhere. And we can get this town on the right track, in the right direction, and get this town improved. That's why I joined the council.
So, you've got a lot of, I think none of us, when we first got on here, there wasn't one of us that had a lot of experience. But the question needs to be asked, so if people have something that they want to let us know what their experience is, or if they don't have experience and they get appointed to the council, then we need to know where we need to send them for any sort of training on budgetaries and, and things like that that are available maybe in the future. So...
Well, I finish with...
Yeah.
I would like to thank you for the opportunity of applying for this position. And that, I recognize that would be a difficult decision for you. But just remember not to take yourselves too seriously, because a hundred years from now, somebody's probably going to be blaming you for letting in body houses.
Okay, so, we need to rank our, our... Yeah, yeah. Rank them on your, on your, this. One, two, three, four, five. One being your top pick.
We're doing one through 10.
One through 10, yes. So, rank them.
And one being your top, top would be the highest?
Okay. Let's do it that way. 10 being the highest. Rank them 10 through 1. And then we'll add them up once I get them.
Aren't children a joy?
Yes.
Okay.
Was that, is that old of you? I'm getting that.
I was turning the gears and here's 35.
Qualified, but in that measure.
Open, open mouth, insert foot.
Got you by a couple of years.
What are you? Forty-two. Dang, I really did step in the soup. Yes, I did. 42, well, I'm 26 now. I'm 44 going on about 80.
Don't feel bad though, my birthday's this month, so...
Well, I'll be 36.
You guys better remember that when you leave the council. It's just a young push on here.
Yes.
She qualified for age discrimination at over 40.
Really? Keep that in mind. You get no senior discounts.
I know. I have arrived.
Told the boss that the other day when he was going off. I said, that's age discrimination. You're discriminating because age is age discrimination. He's like, I'm 42, I'm over 40. I'm in an elite group now.
Yeah, select group.
Okay.
You got it, man.
Statistical tie.
Well, we can just, we can just redo it with just those two candidates. Select one of two.
Okay. We'll... Yeah, it's okay. Let's just do a one. Select one out of those two. Go ahead and pass them this way. Just on a piece of paper. Okay?
Have it recovered from that.
I got yours.
I wasn't even here for that.
Greg, I got yours. Okay. All right. So, we will make that a motion and a final decision in regular council meeting.
Do we have to keep these as a public record?
I don't believe we do.
I'm not sure. We should probably keep them just to be, to be sure.
Well, no, I, I think we should too.
I, I need to ask Robert.
Yeah. I don't know that we do, but we'll, I'll give them to him in the, yeah. All right. With that, we will close the meeting at 7:20.